Good evening, everyone, and welcome. We're going to get the room adjusted a little bit here, give people a chance to sit down, and then we'll get started. Well, I welcome everyone tonight. We're going to start with the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for July 22nd. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Board Member Bennett.
Here.
Board Member Tesler.
President.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Claussen.
Here.
Board Member Dickey.
Here.
Board Member Thomas.
Here.
Board Member Bernards.
Here.
Board Member Clem.
Here.
Chair Peterson.
Here.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a special meeting agenda this evening. We need a motion for approval of that. Member Bennett.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the special meeting agenda for the Urban Renewal Agency.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Bernards to approve the special meeting agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. This is a time for public comment, but I see no one has signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that did want to have a moment for public comment for the Urban Renewal Agency meeting? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our action items. Member Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the Urban Renewal Agency approve a grant agreement between the City of Salem and Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem for capital improvements to the downtown park aids.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Dickey. Is there discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The recommendation is to approve a grant agreement between the -- I actually read the wrong part of this -- between the City of Salem and the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem in the amount of $712,000 to provide funds to the City of Salem for capital improvements to the downtown parking structures. Just one comment, I think it's really fitting that we're discussing paid parking tonight in light of this use of urban renewal funds to support so-called free parking.
Well said. Other comments? All right. Councilor Tesler. Member Tesler.
Thank you. I have a comment and a question, and I guess I'll just form it as a question if this is the right time. I think that it's interesting about the parking structures, and, you know, having kind of thought about it and dwelt upon it, I was just sort of wondering if that eventually we might consider doing something like passing them into private ownership or doing something along those lines, like they do in Portland and in other cities where private parties own the parking garages and manage the parking garages and take care of the upgrades and the other things that need to happen with those parking garages. They are no longer part of the city. I think over the long term, we might do some cost-benefit analysis and look into that. I feel it might save the city a tremendous amount of money, considering how much money we put into the parking garages to maintain them and keep them. Just an idea. Question?
Actually, would our city manager like to comment about that, because I know there has been some research done recently?
Yes, we have had a few years ago some interest from different people in purchasing the structures, but when they found that we had free on-street parking, their interest went away, because in order to -- if you're going to buy a parking structure, you want to be able to make money, excuse me, off of it. And if people have the option of going into a structure and paying versus being able to park free on the street, they choose to park free on the street. So over time, depending on how council wants to move with the Parking Task Force recommendations, it's something over time that might be a real possibility.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Member Bennett, would you like to introduce 4B?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Nanki to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I draw your attention to the information report that's in your agenda packet, and with no further meet -- no further business to come before the Urban Renewal Agency, the meeting is adjourned. All right, I'll now open the meeting of the Salem City Council for Monday, July 22nd, 2013. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Councilor Bennett.
Here.
Councilor Tesler.
President.
Councilor Nanki.
Here.
Councilor Claussen.
Here.
Councilor Dickey.
Here.
Councilor Thomas.
Here.
Councilor Bernards.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here. Thank you. All right, we have additions and deletions to the agenda. I see a packet on my table, probably everyone has that. Councilor Bennett, would you like to introduce those?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions and deletions to the council agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Nanki to approve the additions, deletions, and revisions to the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. I would like to just take a moment for council comment, I'm going to open it right up, to say how much I appreciated the work that our Parks Department and our Public Works Department have been doing to prepare Busch Park for the tremendous art fair that was just held here in Salem Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I was there all day Saturday and just about all day Sunday, and really did notice and appreciate all the work that it takes to prepare the park, not only with the facilities that are there, but all of the landscaping, I thought that the shrubbery, the flowers, it just -- it was such an inviting setting, and I had a chance to run into people that I talked with that I didn't even know, surprise, surprise, that I would do that. And sometimes they were from Seattle, or sometimes they were from New Jersey, or sometimes they were from Salem, and they all said the same thing about what a great venue it is and how pleasant it was to be there. So kudos to our Parks Department.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilor Bernards?
I too was there at least two out of the three days, and I really want to thank Linda Norris and her staff for trimming up the bushes along Mission Street that they get once a year. It was a little scary that that was going to get done in time for the fair, but it did. That's not my comment tonight, what I wanted to talk about was on July 14th, Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association came together through the work of the hard work of Sally Cook and put in a community garden on South Liberty Road. So I really want to thank Sally and Alan Alexander, who is the chair of the Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association, Ian Dixon, who works for Marion Food Share, and the hard work that he has done to put all the parks or many of the -- many of the community gardens in this community together. I think it not only feeds people, but it teaches them where food comes from, how to do it on their own, and probably the most important thing, I think, is bringing the community together. People who may not have been -- have seen each other at any point in time will come together in this community garden. So kudos for Marion Food Share, Sally Cook, and Al in Sunny Slope Neighborhood Association.
Wonderful, thank you. Councilor Thomas?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention, there's my husband's over this organization called Young Men's Hope, and the purpose of the organization is to provide mentors for the young men in our community who have trouble, pasts, or going through difficult issues right now. And we had our second annual conference this weekend, and I just wanted to thank Chief Jerry Moore for being one of our speakers. And after the conference, the young men were able to share their feedback on it, and they really liked the fact that they had a police officer, let alone the chief, come and be a presenter and share his own personal testimonies to kind of give some encouragement to the young men that even though, you know, he's in a high position, that people who are in high positions also have issues of their own in their personal lives. So I just want to thank him for coming out and participating and being one of our speakers and really giving the young men that were there some encouragement and some hope, which was the purpose of the conference. So thanks to Chief Moore for taking time out to come and sit with these kids.
That's great. Nice to hear. Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a reminder that tomorrow is the first day of our quiet zone over on the U.P. tracks, and just wanted to again take the opportunity to thank the public work staff, particularly Mark Bechtel, for the tremendous amount of work he's done on this, and also my constituent Alan Scott in Northeast Neighbors, who spent the last decade working on this and apparently will be working another year or so to get the final pieces of the quiet zone put together up into the northern and southern parts of the line through Salem. So hopefully it'll be quiet tomorrow night.
Till it gets right back to it.
Till it gets down to Tesler and Nanki's neighborhood.
After.
Councilor Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank this council. I've heard from dozens of my constituents who are appreciative that we were able to get a grass-and-weeds person back on our code enforcement. I mean, I just keep hearing about that, so thank you, everyone who supported that. I think it's going to be a good addition back into our budget, so thanks.
That's great. It is, it's so important, so important. All right. Our next item is public comment, and I'm going to take a second here for a little clarification. There may be people who have come down tonight who would like to talk about the parking district tax, which has just been levied or reissued, I guess is the proper way to say that, and the time tonight to comment about that, if you should so choose, would be under number nine, item nine, which is toward the end of the meeting. We will be taking testimony tonight during the public hearing on the Parking Task Force recommendations, so please be sure if you signed up on the wrong sheet, we can certainly make changes here if you realize you're in the -- signed up to be in the wrong place, or if you didn't know how to sign up at all, we can help you do that, too. So just want to clarify that. And now I see that there are people signed up for public comment, and this is for items that are on the agenda, other than the public hearing. So if you discover that suddenly you're in the wrong place on this, we will adjust it or help you adjust it. Okay, our first person signed up is Mary Smith. And Mary, you'll have three minutes, and at the end of two minutes, the amber light on the podium comes on, and then at the end of three minutes, a red light comes on. Welcome, and give your name and address or your ward number, please.
Mary Smith, Ward 3, or 4190 Monkers Street. And good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, and anyone from the county that's here, I appreciate that, too. I had very disheartening news this week and last week, and it was because the city and the county both decided without any other options, no other ways of correcting anything that's put into statements, nothing that just said, "We're going to leave the walkway open, and we're going to work with the county to make it better." And I was just really shocked. No one from the city or the county, no one approached any of us homeowners to ask us a second opinion, to see if we could talk about it and sit down with them. There was no discussion whatsoever. I had three minutes to talk to you a couple weeks, three weeks ago, and that was the most I've ever said in front of any city council, county commissioners, or in front of you, Madam Mayor. We purchased our property in 1993, and at that time, there was no Ricky Street, there was no ShopCo, no Home Depot, there was nothing. Highway 22, that was it, and the state penitentiary, or the OSCI. So, you know, as progress came in and surrounded us, we, as property owners, lost more and more of our rights, and we lost them, and we lost them, and in the beginning, we didn't even know we were losing them, and then they were gone. We just need to be involved in the decisions that involve us, whether they're positive or negative. I mean, not everybody fights till they die. Most people have a part of them that says, "Okay, let's figure this out, let's make this work." We don't even have that option, and we haven't had it since 2004, when we lost it, when the city allowed the strip mall to go in, right at our back door, and vacated the property under false pretense that we owned it. We didn't even know about a right-of-way until they busted -- people busted the gates down. We didn't even know, we thought it was supposed to be a locked gate forever, only there for them to work on sewer lines. And then we find out that the city built the sewer -- built the wall right over the top of the sewer lines. Now we've got another problem. So we just need to be involved. We just -- it's just not right, not involving us.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down and your testimony. Thank you. John Latimer?
Madam Mayor, Councilor.
Welcome.
How are you?
Fine, thanks. Nice to have you here.
I'm -- I live at 3336 Huckleberry Court South, and I'm here, I guess, as the transition from chair of Correginali Neighborhood Association to a co-chair of the Southwest Association of Neighbors, fondly referred to as SWAN. It's on your agenda tonight, and that transition won't be complete, the amalgamation of the two neighborhood associations until the city council approves it. I'd like to urge you to do so. We've spent a lot of time putting this together. It's been an idea of mine for a long time, many, many years, because Correginali has such a small base, only about 750 families, and it really wasn't enough to have a really useful neighborhood association. On top of that, the city has to provide staff for all of these neighborhood associations. I think it's good for the city that we begin to combine them. Some of the neighborhood chairs don't agree with me on that, but I think we have too many neighborhood associations. So I urge you to go ahead and adopt that. I'd also like to thank Brady Rogers and Corinne Fletcher. Without these folks helping us along the way, giving me moral support, as I argued this with several folks, I don't think it would have happened. And also Linda Norris, who helped along the way, too. I really appreciate the city's help, and I hope you'll go ahead and approve it. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you for coming down and testifying. Oh, I think there's a question here for you. Councilor Claussen?
I'm sorry about that. It might be more appropriate -- this is an information report, correct? You mentioned approval. I don't see that we need approval, but do you know where that's coming from?
I think that we have a word from our city attorney.
Dan Atchison, Assistant City Attorney. Actually, the amendment to --
You need to get closer to your microphone.
The amendment that allowed this, the merger to happen, does not require council approval. The associations can work out the process among themselves, and this is just an information report.
Okay. This is wanting to be clear. Thank you.
All right, there we are. Councilor Bernards?
So where are you holding your meetings, or where will you hold SWAN meetings at this point, henceforth?
We're holding them the third Thursday of each month at the -- what is the name of that place?
Life Source.
Life Source. They have a meeting room across the street from the Life Source grocery store. I was told we had to have the city approval before we became formal as the new neighborhood association, that's why I urge you to move forward with it.
Well, I'm pleased that you came this evening and honored, we appreciate your appearance tonight, John, and I also want to say thank you for your years of service to the neighborhood association and to the City of Salem. It tremendously makes a difference when a neighborhood is well-led and has a cohesive neighborhood association, and I'm looking to the SWANs as a model and hoping, as you say, that other neighborhood associations will follow suit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you. All right, Michael Johnson?
Michael Johnson, I am the chair of ESNA, which is that neighborhood association just outside the city. John, we have herons over in our neighborhood, you're welcome to come see them in our wetlands. On June the 6th, I had called for, or I called for a meeting between city and county staff, which would be Public Works, Sheriff's Office, commissioners, and city councilors from the appropriate jurisdictions, to come to see if we could come to some agreement as to what the issue was between the walkways, or the walkway from Monkers to Ricky. At that time, we got some turf, I won't call it a turf war, but the county said, "Oh, it belongs to the city," and the city said, "No, it belongs to the county." The report that you received earlier this week, we're grateful for the efforts that have gone into it, that we're even having a discussion. However, if you look at the fine print in, down towards the bottom of the report, it basically said, "You know, the real problem is over on the county side of the line, while we have to do," the city now, "all we have to do is deal with the lights and the noise. The problem is deeper than that. It's going to require more effort than that. Closing the wall off would be easy, it would at least give the people on the Monkers Street side some relief for the noise." I have syringes in my briefcase down here, I thought I'd throw them out on the floor and ask the question from Commissioner Clem or Commissioner Bernards, "How many syringes in your backyard are enough before you get so upset that you come to the city council and demand politely some remediation?" The same to the rest of you. We're still looking for a really good solution. There may be some. But right now, we're not seeing action between the two groups. If we could form a work group between the two of them, and they can come to our location, I'll chair it, and then we'll go from there. That's one thing. Now, the other three minutes that I get, and he'll back me up, my wife is an English teacher, you may have heard this before, and she did this with all her kids. When you get to that pause in the Pledge of Allegiance, that we all learned back in the 50s, when there was a comma there, they took it out. One nation under God. I know it's hard-fought because we always learned it by rote.
We did. Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. I appreciate your suggestion about the joint committee, maybe we can work towards that. Thank you. Phil Decker? Good evening. No camera in your hand?
Got my cellphone handy.
Oh, it is there. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Phil Decker, my address is 4289 44th Court, Northeast in Salem, but I'm coming here representing our community that is right next to Monkers Path, this easement, as the principal at Four Corners Elementary School. And I'm really pleased that Mike had called that meeting and brought partnerships together to kind of look at that, and because I kind of discovered the path by having our kids an initiative called Cubs Care, where the Four Corners Cubs look for ways to support the community. And a volunteer, he'll speak in a minute, Jerry Stevens, had gotten the kids to look at just some litter patrol and cleaning up the neighborhood, and when we got to Monkers Path, found out that that's a place that unfortunately, we cannot have our kids clean. Very dangerous, and we talked to the neighbors, and they gave us the history of that path, and it raised very significant concerns for me as an advocate for kids and families of that space being in that neighborhood. This neighborhood is, well, our school and how it could be similar in other schools nearby, 90% of the children are on free and reduced lunch, which means it's a low-income neighborhood. That means many, many families walk to school, walk to shopping, all right? This is not a neighborhood where everyone's got their cars and they're just going into parking lots to do whatever they need to do, a lot of walkers. And so you have a very high-traffic area, although small, probably the distance from Madam Mayor to the back of this room, but that place is a real sort of nexus for a lot of activity that's a significant safety issue. Mike has hinted at it, there is gang activity, there's crime, there's vagrancy in that area, drug use. It's a public bathroom, and so it's not a place for kids to clean up, it's a place for people to avoid, although it's really a part of the community that's unavoidable. So I don't know what's the best recommendation in terms of closing it down, keeping them open, there's pros and cons to either way, but the part of the recommendation that I'm really excited about and really urge the city council to follow through on, and the county as well, is where it says, "Direct staff to work with Marion County and other interested parties for improvements." It's a place that people wouldn't notice unless you happened upon it or went out looking for it, but it's a significant health and safety issue for our kids and families. And the school is willing to pitch in if it's clean enough and safe enough for us to get out there and pick up trash and help beautify the neighborhood there.
That's great. Thank you very much. Are there questions of Mr. Decker? Well, I appreciate your testimony, appreciate your service as a principal to the school, too.
Yeah, it's a pleasure, yeah.
Thanks for coming down. Jerry Stevens?
Madam Mayor, council members, this is my first time testifying, so pardon me if I step on anybody's toes with the protocols, but I'm a volunteer.
We just want you to introduce yourself and give your address or your ward number, and then be sure to speak right into the microphone.
Okay. It's 415 Elma Avenue, I live kitty-corner to the school. Use Monkers Path a lot, and when I got involved with the school, I met a group of kids who wanted to do something great in the neighborhood, and so I took them over to what we're calling Monkers Path, and they wanted to make it a better place. It was in the middle of winter, it's horrible place for people to try to navigate through. We started a process of thinking how we could make it a better place, and one of our first steps was to talk to the neighbors, and we heard their horror stories about what's going on there, and because of the safety issues, we had to immediately stop this project and kind of redirect, and that's apparently what kind of led to this whole thing. But anyways, we have nine, 10, 11-year-olds that want to do something about the neighborhood, but we need the leaders to lead, and to -- and we'll do whatever we can, and we want to do what's best for everybody involved, including the neighbors. But just ironically, I was on the path yesterday unintentionally, and there was a gentleman in a wheelchair with a giant bag of pot bottles and cans, retired gentleman on his way probably to do his weekly income, and he couldn't get through there, and he was asking for help, and we -- I couldn't help him, and so this involves people who aren't here tonight, who can't speak, and involves nine and 10-year-old kids, and it involves people in their 60s and 70s who are just trying to make a living. So we're here to do whatever we can, any way we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming and testifying. Are there questions from any of the councils for Mr. Stevens? Well, Mr. Stevens, thanks for your volunteering with the school, too. We appreciate that. Makes a big difference. Okay, I don't see anyone else signed up to testify during this time. Was there anyone here who did want to and wasn't able to get on the list? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Councilor Bennett, do you want to present the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the -- it looks like we're going to pull everything. Nanki pulls 3.3A, Bennett pulls 3.3C, and 3.3D.
All right, and 3.3B, as we noted earlier All right, and 3.3B, as we noted earlier, had been withdrawn from the agenda, so, all right. Is there a second to his motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to actually move all three items, 3.3A, C, and D, actually from the consent calendar, and we'll deal with them under Special Orders of Business. Any comment regarding that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you very much. All right, we will now move on to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first, 4.0A, would the city recorder like to introduce that for us, please?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding consideration of adopting Resolution Number 2013-36, setting the land use application fees and charges for the Community Development Department and Public Works Department for fiscal year 2013-14.
Thank you, and we have a staff report, I believe?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Brian Colborne, planner with the Community Development Department, and this evening I'll be giving the staff presentation for the setting of land use application and appeal fees for the Community Development Department and Public Works Department. At this time, I'd like to enter the staff report and its attachments into the case The land use fee schedule includes application and appeal fees for land use requests such as site plan reviews, land divisions, zone, and zone changes. It also includes Public Works Department fees, such as the review of a traffic impact analysis, for example. The fee schedule resolution is adopted by the council each year, and beginning last year has included a small annual increase tied to the Consumer Price Index. Now, if the council doesn't remember having a staff presentation and public hearing for the adoption of our land use fees in previous years, that's because this is the first year that we've held a public hearing on this matter. The State Land Use Board of Appeals has said that cities and counties must adopt land use application and appeal fees in a manner that does not prevent citizen involvement in the land use system. And therefore, we are holding a public hearing for our annual land use fee resolution starting this year. Now, there are some statutory limits on land use application fees and appeals. In addition to the requirement for holding the public hearing, the sorts of limits that statute sets include things like the amount local governments can charge on applications for land use matters or appeals. As I said, in summary, these fees charged for, are charged for several types of land use applications and decisions, these statutes limit those fees to no more than the actual or average cost of processing the application. Staff reviewed our land use application fees and the average amount of time it takes for staff to review those applications, and we've determined that generally, we, the amount of time and the cost to process these applications falls well below, or, I'm sorry, let me reverse that, staff reviewed the application fees and the average amount of time it takes to process those applications, has determined that the amount we charge for land use applications and appeal fees generally is well below the cost to process those applications, which is consistent with the state statute, pardon me on that. In addition, there is a statutory limit of $250 for filing fees on certain types of appeals. Our current appeal fee is $246. The proposed fee schedule sets all appeal fees at the statutory maximum of $250 this year. And of course, neighborhood associations are still able to file appeals without charge. Now, as previously mentioned, it is our practice to include an annual Consumer Price Index fee increase in the fee resolution. The CPI this year was calculated to be 2.3%. There are no new fees in the resolution before you, but we have added existing application types where they were missing from the fee schedule. We've amended fee names to be consistent with the new terminology that's used in the UDC or Unified Development Code, first eight chapters of which were recently adopted, and we've removed outdated fee types from the schedule. So in closing, staff recommends that city council adopt the land use fee resolution for fiscal year 2013-14, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, and the public hearing is now open officially. There's no one that had signed up to testify, is there anyone in the audience that wanted to testify during this public hearing? All right, then we'll take questions by councilors. Are there any questions of staff? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Counselor Bennett, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the city council adopt Resolution Number 2013-36, setting the fees and charges for the Community Development Department's Planning Division and Public Works Department effective August 1st, 2013.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to compliment staff, it was a well-written staff report, as well as, I like us staying on top of our fees in general at the city so we don't have big, you know, herky-jerky fee increases. It's a lot more predictable for the entire city to do it on a slow gradual basis so we don't just kill somebody, you know, with a project that might have something in the works, or just a homeowner who wants to do something and all of a sudden it's a lot more money than they thought. So, I appreciate that, and thanks to staff for staying on top of it.
Great, thank you. Counselor Benars?
Should duly note that there is a letter from the Marion Polk Home Builders Association in support of this resolution. I know that they've looked at it and said the same exact thing as Counselor Clausen has mentioned, that nobody wants to see these huge jumps. I should have asked, but didn't ask the question of, I hope no fees were doubled within a simple thing, but it's okay.
Okay, all right, any further comment? Discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll move for the question. All those in favor of the motion to accept staff recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries, thank you. All right, our second public hearing item has to do with the Parking Management Vision and the Parking Task Force recommendations. Would the city recorder please introduce the public hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding Parking Management Vision and the Parking Task Force Recommendations.
All right, and we have a staff presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Doug Rux, Assistant Director for the Urban Development Department. What I'm going to do this evening is walk you through a PowerPoint presentation that's been used by the Parking Task Force through their open houses and information they've been sharing with the neighborhood associations. The first aspect in your staff report is a request to adopt a Parking Management Vision, and as you can see in the slide, there are three components to that. The first is tailoring a Salem downtown parking business and customer parking needs, pays for itself, and enhances the downtown viability. There are seven bullets that are underneath this, which identify some of the benefits for businesses from this particular overall vision, and I don't want to go through and read each one of those, but it addresses the issues about how long parkers can stay, frees up urban renewal funds for downtown revitalization projects, provides stable funding for the downtown security components, and eliminates the current paid parking tax. For customers in the downtown, it provides choice and flexibility in the parking. There's improved clarity for the parking regulations in the downtown, convenience for customers, it's identified that there would be the potential for a variety of ways in order to pay for parking. Currently, you do coins if there are meters, this would allow debit cards, credit cards, prepaid cards, and so forth. And that the system could be customized block by block and by uses, and that would take coordination and so forth with downtown businesses. You may ask, what was the Parking Task Force created? This occurred back in August. There were four elements in the resolution that was adopted by council that set forth the Parking Task Force. Big component of that was the financial stability of the downtown, maintaining those public parking garages and downtown vibrancy. There are five areas that were reviewed as part of the Parking Task Force, and those are showed in the color code on the map. What they learned, what they learned was in the Capitol Mall area, the parking system works, but there was a need for upgrade for parking technology. In West Salem, North Downtown, in the South Waterfront area, which is the area south of downtown, includes the civic area, is that the current system is working. But they also found that there was limited resources to do enforcement in the residential permit areas. In the downtown, what they were identifying is that there is a revenue issue and that there is a management issue, and that there's some unclarity in the regulations that occur within the downtown parking area, and that employees were one of the management concerns of the way they park. So, the problem in the downtown was two pieces. It was management issues, so think about the two-hour parking, the twice-in-one-block-face issue, reaching an 85% threshold in parking in the central core, so think of Center Street, down to State Street, Commercial Street, over to Court Street. And there was also a financial issue, and that was a $700,000 a year shortfall in the revenue to operate the program, which consisted of $200,000 in operational expense and a half a million dollars a year in capital improvements used, and those funds coming from the Urban Renewal District. The Parking Task Force also looked at a variety of other possible solutions to address the management and the financial issues, and those are bulleted out. But it ranged from increasing the parking district, extending enforcement hours, continuing the use of urban renewal funds to do capital improvements, increasing permit costs, and they looked at each and every one of those components in detail. One of those was looking at the issue of increasing the tax, and this is, I know, a difficult chart to read, but if you look at the percentage columns, what it shows is that there are some very big percentage increases that would be necessary in order to cover that $700,000 shortfall. One of the examples is if you look at a medium retail business downtown, going from roughly 1362 a year, would have to go up to almost $6,000. The recommendations are in your staff report, so I won't go over those, but they are in two component pieces, so the first is on the left-hand side, was dealing with the Capitol Mall area, the other is in the downtown core, which is to go to a paid-on-street parking system. At the time of implementation of that system is to eliminate the downtown parking district and its tax, and then do an annual review on the parking program through the budget process. The Parking Task Force looked at what an estimate might be for an hourly rate, and that was calculated at about $1.25 an hour in order to cover that $700,000 gap. They also looked at different communities who have implemented on-street parking needs, there are just a few examples, in Tacoma, in the Lloyd District, and in Oregon City that have gone through this process, and they have found that it has worked for them. Community outreach, as I mentioned, we went through a variety, including five open houses, we went to Nenn, Scan, Can Do, Grant, the information was shared with them, and to the Salem Chamber of Commerce, sharing the information that they had learned. The question about what's the next steps? If the city council was to move forward with a paid-on-street system and to accept the Parking Task Force recommendation overall, there would be a process to go through to do financial analysis, checking with the council, coordination and work with businesses in the downtown and the community, then looking at an implementation plan, again, those check-ins and working with city council, with businesses in the community, and before you would ever get to a point of issuing an RFP to go out to put new technology. This one important piece is, back in January of 2013, the city council did accept a recommendation from the Parking Task Force to do new technology in the Capitol Mall area, and at the time that that is being implemented, one of the recommendations is to expand the Capitol Mall boundary by about three blocks, and then look at that area about where, what the locations would be in order to put in upgraded technology. There's a frequently asked questions piece, there's a much more robust component of this that is on the project website, which is www.cityofsalem.net. If you go to the right-hand column, click on Parking Task Force, and all the information that Parking Task Force has dealt with since September is located on that website. With that, I will conclude, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now open the public hearing. We have several people who've signed up this evening, and you may use either podium. The first on our list is Paul Gaylor, Mr. Gaylor, and following him will be Jennifer Martin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, my name is Paul Gaylor, I reside at 471 High Street Southeast, and I'm the owner of some downtown properties, including retail and office spaces. I support the Parking Task Force recommendations, Agenda Item 4B, particularly with respect to the downtown parking district. Two items, two of their recommendations are particularly important. Paid-on-street parking is a needed and effective parking management tool, and I believe the most important recommendation of the task force is establishing sustainable financing for the district. Why must downtown parking pay its own way? The original capital costs were externally funded, operating costs were to be self-funded through the parking tax and employee parking fees. This is consistent with urban renewal as a bootstrap investment to turn an economically-depressed area into a viable contributing economic area. Operating subsidies undermine the purpose of urban renewal. Continued subsidies divert funding from redevelopment, which is leveraged with private investment. Subsidies also skew choices, economic and social. Counselor Tesler's question and City Manager Norris's response about the potential of selling the garages is one example of that. It also, I believe, affects public investment that in the district that includes parking. It has some of the same impact there. There is a need for new parking management tools downtown. Many changes have occurred since the parking district was formed, increasing the complexity of parking management. This includes the opening of Riverfront Park, the convention center, growing downtown residential population, and there's a lot of welcome growth and development, including in the surrounding areas, such as increased state employment and parking demands, and CCBI. These already impact adjacent neighborhoods. The current tools have kept demand within the 85% rule to date, but some blocks in times exceed that capacity. The two-hour time limit is too restrictive, there are issues with the once-per-day-per-block rule. Employee parking regulation is overwhelmingly challenging with present tools. Paid-on-street parking is a needed parking management tool to address these challenges. Risk, yes, there's risk to change, but there are also risks to avoiding necessary changes. I support a self-sustaining parking district with flexible parking management for the benefit of customers. And thank the councilors for listening, and I particularly want to thank the Parking Task Force that did a terrific job and put a lot of time into this issue. If there's any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there questions by councilors? Thank you very much, we appreciated your attendance at so many of those task force meetings. Jennifer Martin, followed by Dana Vigdigan.
Sorry, I have a slide to put up, so I need to come over here. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors, my name is Jennifer Martin, and I'm a commercial real estate broker with Sperry Van Ness Commercial Advisors here in Salem at 1665 Liberty Street Southeast. I am also the current Chair of the Downtown Advisory Board, but I need to ensure that the record reflects that I'm here tonight as a commercial real estate broker and not on behalf of my service to the Downtown Advisory Board. The current parking management system is not working. It is currently funded partially by valuable urban renewal dollars, which is compromising the initiatives set forth by the Urban Renewal Agency to enhance the central business district and integrate commercial and residential opportunities in the core, as well as fund building renovation and beautification projects, and improve bike and pedestrian access to and through the core. Additionally, businesses and consumers have repeatedly commented that the current management system of a parking tax and two-hour time limits are not conducive to business success and pleasant shopper experiences. The Parking Task Force's recommendations solve both of those management concerns. In my role as a In my role as a commercial retail broker, I annually analyze the entire Salem Kaiser Market from a vacancy and space rent perspective. I think it's important to point out this evening that parking is never free. There is a cost to providing parking, whether it is in an urban or suburban setting. When a developer acquires a property in a suburban setting, he's required to spend money to develop and provide onsite parking. A developer in the Central Business District does not. That additional cost of the project is taken into consideration when established rental rates to charge tenants in order for the development to be feasible and the developer to achieve an acceptable return on the costs they've invested into a project. As you can see on the slide I've prepared, the current average rental rates in the Central Business District plus the minimum parking tax most businesses pay pale in comparison to the rates being paid by retailers for the same level of occupancy in a suburban setting. That's because the cost of parking and the cost of development is higher outside the CBD due to the requirement to provide onsite parking and the cost to provide and maintain the parking infrastructure. Downtown building owners do not have to provide that excess land or spend money to provide parking, which drives down the amount of income needed to provide the same return. My conclusion is this: The current downtown parking infrastructure and operation has to be paid for somehow. The structures must be maintained at a safe level to continue to be an asset to the downtown businesses and shopping community. The task force has completed a thorough analysis of a number of options and determined this to be the most equitable to all stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. Martin? All right, well, thank you very much, and appreciate your testimony, and appreciate the service that you give to the Downtown Advisory Board as well.
I have extras of these, and I'll leave them on the back table if anybody would like to pick up a copy.
That would be fine. Actually, you could give them to Mr. Goderbaugh, right there beside you.
Okay, thank you.
Right there. Okay, and he'll pass those out to us. Thank you very much. Dana Vigdigan, followed by Nicholas Williams.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Welcome.
Council members. I'm Dana Bug Devine from 401 Center Street here in Salem. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of supporting the recommendations of the Parking Task Force, specifically with the parking management vision, and hopefully some, or at least, or all of the recommendations provided by the Parking Task Force. I've managed Salem Center since 2005, and served on the Downtown Advisory Board for over five years. During that timeframe, we also developed a strategic action plan, and also served for the last 10 months and change with the Parking Task Force. I feel a little bit competent in addressing parking issues in downtown. The owners of Salem Center have invested significantly in downtown with our purchase of Salem Center late 2012, with the completion opening of Ross Dress for Less recently, and our current interior refresh program that's ongoing now. As you look around downtown, there's other owners and developers who are investing in downtown, all with confidence, confidence that the council and the city will provide a stable, robust, and customizable parking system that will support us going forward in the future. Our success as a retail shopping center is closely aligned with the economic vitality and vibrancy of downtown Salem. We depend upon the continued development of downtown, including all, not all, but including infrastructure improvements, the addition of new housing in downtown and immediate vicinity, and the continued wise investment of resources to continue to develop the downtown area. The downtown strategic action plan was developed and adopted by this council to help ensure this continued development of a healthy, vibrant downtown. The urban, excuse me, Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Area Funds are instrumental to ensuring the successful implementation of the strategic action plan. Continued diversion of URA funds to the parking district represent a significant lost opportunity cost to all of us. As a shopping center, we're highly dependent on a reliable source of parking for our customers, retailers, and employees, with needs very similar to the remainder of downtown. The parking district must be sustainable, customizable, and robust to support our needs. In a perfect world, I would endorse increasing the parking tax efficiently to meet the financial needs of the system in conjunction with permit system. However, such measures are most likely considered very draconian and are not supported by most of the business endeavors in downtown. Continued use of Riverfront Downtown Urban Renewal Funds will continue to be counterproductive to the goals of the Urban Renewal Agency. The Parking Task Force has taken a detailed review of the parking enterprises and did not come to its recommendations easily. The current system is unsustainable, as we listened to in the staff pitch, as well as Jennifer and Paul's comments as well. The recommendations that you have received for your consideration represent a reasonable compromise of strategic steps to ensure a self-sustaining, robust parking system, as well support the continued economic development of our downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions by councilors? All right, thank you. Appreciate your testimony this evening. Next on our list is Nicholas Williams, followed by Brad Swank.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you for having me. I'm Nick Williams, and I serve as the Public Policy and Membership Manager for the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce. Madam Mayor, councilors, thank you very much for the time and the energy that it takes on issues that are very important, such as this one. On behalf of the Salem Chamber and our members, we appreciate the countless hours you all spend in the pursuit of creating a vision for our community. Thank you, Mayor Peterson, Councilors Bennett, Benars, and City Manager Norris and city staff for engaging our members on July 9th at our second public policy session surrounding this issue. You are all doing an excellent job of engaging our community in this discussion. After the July 9th public policy session, we took a vote, which is a great indicator of where our membership stands on the downtown parking issue. The results were seven in opposition, six in favor, five seeking more information, and four abstentions. Based upon these results, our members and volunteer leaders are asking that the record remain open on the downtown parking issue. We look forward to being a partner and finding the solution that best addresses the needs of the downtown stakeholders, the city, and our community at large. Thank you, and I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your testimony. Appreciate that. Are there questions by any of the councilors? All right, thank you so much. Brad Swank, followed by Claudia Howells.
Good evening, members of the council.
Welcome.
My name is Brad Swank. This week, a 40-year resident of Salem, 32 years living at the same address where I still live, at 1045 Cross Street Southeast Salem, Oregon. I would like to make three points for you. First of all, I believe that the parking meters will kill downtown. I'm going to give examples. Second of all, the people don't want the parking meters. At least, it's a close question, and it's politically divisive. Third, the whole parking meter issue is something of a pig in the polk, not just to me, but to many members of the public. Let me go through these. First of all, it will kill downtown. I was raised in Fort Wayne, Indiana, in the 50s and 60s, and when shopping malls started to go up around the edge of town, and the Chamber of Commerce and the city council wanted to encourage people going to shopping meters and development on the edge of town, they put parking meters in downtown. And it was very successful in doing what they want. The last time I was in Fort Wayne several years ago, there was no downtown. And Fort Wayne had done everything to try and attract people downtown. It had a baseball stadium, it had movies in the park in the summer, it had a square. They'd done everything. Another example is Montgomery, Alabama. A few years ago, we were in Montgomery, Alabama, and we downtown in Montgomery on a Saturday. You could have fired a cannon in any direction and not hit anybody in downtown Montgomery, except for the one hot dog stand that was open. So we went there and had lunch and talked to some of the people who worked in the Capitol and the people who were in the hot dog stand, and they said that Montgomery had developed by expanding out, and one of the ways they did that was to put parking meters downtown. When you go through downtown, it was clearly obvious that there was nobody downtown. Next, people don't want. I'm one of the people who helped gather signatures for the petition to put this issue on the ballot. I talked to hundreds of people and gathered a couple hundred signatures. People don't want it. And I even talked to some businesses who expressed a concern about bringing the matter to the city council because they thought it would be politically problematic to express a concern about something that appeared to already be decided. Finally, pig in a poke. You're moving to accept something that you don't have a budget on. You don't know how much it's going to cost. City people are being laid off, police firemen, those sorts of things, but you don't have a budget. You don't know how much it's going to cost. This is also an isolated issue in a budget that people have difficulty following and knowing what the whole budget is and how this fits into it, and why there's a need for money in this area as opposed to something else. Let me suggest that this is one of the reasons that Detroit, this kind of activity of not having a budget is one of the reasons Detroit is having bankruptcy problems right now. Those are my three issues, and I'm ready to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions for Mr. Swank? All right, thanks for coming down. And the last person signed up is Claudia Howells. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Claudia Howells. I live at 1045 Cross Street Southeast. I'm in Ward 2, and I really do have other things to do on Monday nights than be here. It's beginning to feel a little bit repetitive. I want to point out some things that maybe not be obvious to you. We seem to be developing a pattern, and that is to have public hearings in the middle of summer, when people are busy, when people are on vacation, and on major public policy issues, as opposed to doing them, oh, I don't know, maybe October, when we might get actually more people out. One of the things I've heard collecting signatures, which is really disturbing to me, is that many people no longer believe that you all listen to them. They don't think it's worth their time because you've already made up your mind. I heard that over and over again. I keep hoping that that's not true. Having listened to some of the early testimony on why we need parking meters, I'm even more convinced we don't. Unlike the Capitol Mall area, where you have a captive audience, where people are going to go there, whether they have to pay or not, downtown does not have a captive audience. It competes with retailers, who while may pay more for parking, the parking is free for the customers, and that is a huge difference. If the goal is to chase businesses out of downtown into the vacant strip mall locations around downtown, this will accomplish that. People will not go downtown for coffee to pay $1.75 to park. They won't go downtown for lunch to pay $1.75 or $2. It makes no economic sense. We know you have a revenue problem, but let's look at this holistically. Instead of finding these little fees, parking meters, little bits, pieces here and there out of everyone, and look at and tell the people of Salem what's really going on with our tax base, and be honest about it, and regain the trust that I think is slipping away rather quickly. Parking meters is just a symptom. So I'd like you to go back and rethink this. And by the way, having a task force or an advisory group that refuses to accept public input is really kind of hard to get my mind around. And that's what happened with the Parking Task Force, from any number of people I know who attended. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I would like to clarify something for the audience and for the television viewers as well. At every single meeting of the Parking Task Force, we announced that we accepted written testimony, that testimony went on, went to all of the members of the task force, and it was made available to the public, I believe, on our website. That is not being closed to testimony. We took testimony. We simply asked that it be in a written form. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else that cares to testify for this item but was not able to sign up? Yes. Mr. Brentano, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I laughed in non-latimer for apparently not knowing procedures and then found out that I have to sign up to be able to talk. Just a couple of points. I was asked to be on the task force to pretty much present the county's perspective, and we have a big investment downtown with our courthouse and Courthouse Square Building that we will be back in soon. And we've had trouble with parking. It has to do with adequacy, space even available for people who wish to come down to do business with the county, and the time was certainly a big issue. Two hours isn't enough time. It really only gives you an hour and 15 minutes or an hour and a half to conduct your business. Now, I love short meetings, so it's hard for me to complain about that one, but it didn't work out. So I was looking at it in those terms, and then I was looking at it in terms, I thought they would talk about jury parking. We did a little bit, but only as a peripheral part of the subject. We have trouble finding parking for our jurors and having a system. The city's worked very well for a number of years, providing some space far away. And as an aside, we put some money in our budget this year to help address that problem. Unfortunately, I find out it takes a lot more than we put away in our budget. Some things are made, and I'll just be real quick, I don't want to double up stuff, but the things that I, those were the things I went in looking for, and just to what might say it a little different or highlight it a little different. So we're looking for ways that would provide adequate revenue for the maintenance and security of the parking structures and the parking system, and even a bit of how could you ever expand it if you don't have any, some resources. We're finding some incentive to move employees out and literally make space available for the patrons we want coming downtown, and this plan and this vision will address that. We wanted it to be fair, and I think it really is, minimize bad impacts to business and maximize the good impacts. And a key point was this flexibility of the machinery, the meters themselves, and we didn't really get into it, but if, when it gets to implementation time to say, to be able to say for a certain target area, I just heard that you couldn't come down and have some coffee. There's no reason to be enforcing meters unless you're just trying to maximize revenue, which shouldn't be the source, or the issue. But you don't even have to be enforcing it in the early morning, and you can tailor it to make the business needs of a certain area. So I see that little light's on. We did look at neighborhoods, and I would just like to ask the council to adopt this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions for Commissioner Brentano? All right, thank you so much. We do appreciate you being on the task force and coming down this evening. All right, there's no further testimony? Just state your name and your address or your ward number, please.
Okay, so my name is Paul Crissell, and I live at 1675 High Street Southeast. So I came here tonight just basically to listen and to try to understand the issues around parking district, and I came to one of the public meetings that was held over at the convention center and asked questions, and I do appreciate that the members of the task force were there. Every question I had, they provided answers to, and it was very, very interesting. I believe the shortfall is real. I don't have any reason not to believe the shortfall is real, and so I'm asking about solutions. So I went up to some petitioners who were petitioning around this, and what I found was that the petition isn't just about no parking meters, it also would limit any increases in business taxes, and also would eliminate the two-hour limitation on meters. So I thought, well, that's three different things that aren't necessarily, I don't know if there's solutions to the problem or not, but where's the additional revenue come from? Where does, how does the revenue get covered? And I didn't see anything, any proposed solution for how to cover that revenue. One petitioner did tell me, well, we should move the garages, privatize the garages. I said, well, how's that save money? Because would that put meters, would that put paid parking in the garages? And would that discourage use of the garages? Then somebody else said, well, we should decrease PERS for public employees. I said, well, that's, that city didn't have any control over that. That's a state issue, and even if your PERS costs went down, would that money automatically go over? Another person told me, well, they could move the security to the police department. And I'm thinking, where's the police department going to get the money for that? And the police department is running short also. So I'm reflecting on my own experience going downtown. So if I find parking on the street, I'll pull in and park on the street. If I, if I don't, I pull into a garage, and they're free, and they'll stay free under this. I mean, I don't see the problem there. If I want to go down, I can't find a place to park. What I do know is that this idea of killing downtown, I go to Salem Library a lot. In fact, there was a petitioner outside the library, and I pointed out to him, I just paid to park in the garage for the library. First United Church of Christ, I go there for some meetings, and it paid to park there. American Red Cross, go there, it paid to park there. It just- It just seems to me, and my daughter said this to me, it was kind of funny, we were talking about it, she lives in Connecticut now, said, you know, every city I've ever wanted to go to, I assume I have to pay for parking. And so I don't know what the solution is, but what I can say is we shouldn't just say no. We shouldn't do the typical Oregonian thing and say, I want everything free without paying for it. Somebody's got to pay for this. And I think, we're not Kaiser, we're Salem. We aren't willing to pay for stuff. We ought to figure out a way. We ought to figure out a way to pay for this. Combination of business tax and park fees, I'll pay to park at a parking meter. I do it now. If I, if I have a short meeting over at, I'm on the council board, they use the United Church of Christ office. If I have a, if I have a meeting I have time to, I'll park in Marion Parkade. I'll walk over. Short walk, shorter than the walk from the end of a parking garage at the Dexter Mall. If it's a, if I, if I don't have time, I'll pay a buck at the meter to go to a meeting. It's not a big deal.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming. Anyone else who would like to testify with regard to the Parking Task Force recommendations? All right. The public hearing is now closed. Oh, wait a moment. I think I have a motion coming.
Check.
Member Bennett, did you want to make?
Did we want to have any questions of staff first?
Oh, let's ask questions of staff. All right. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Rux, questions of staff? Yes. Counselor Dickey and then Counselor Clem.
Thanks. I have a couple of questions completely unrelated to each other. One question that I have is, I noticed on the outreach list, and I know you guys did quite a bit of outreach. I know last week or the week before, you were downtown doing a lot of outreach to people, telling them about this. I know you've met with the chamber. Did you actually go out to places where people have to drive into downtown to do outreach? Or did you just mostly reach out to the neighborhoods that kind of would be affected because they're close to downtown? And I'm just asking that because I think of the challenges, because I live way out north, I think of the challenges that I have sometimes when I come downtown and try to find parking. And just wondering if you got some perspective from people who actually do have to drive into downtown and what, and what their thoughts were on this.
The outreach that was done were, we did three open houses at the convention center. I should say the Parking Task Force did three open houses at the convention center. We did two at Liberty Plaza. And then we went to the neighborhood associations that are listed in your report, NENSCAN, CANDO. We were going to go to Grant, but they canceled their July meeting. But the chair did ask that we pass the information on to them, so we did. Did we go out further than that specifically? No, we did not. But there was press releases that were out. There was articles in the paper. There was information on our website. So we were looking to, from the task forces, to invite people to come down. But then in the downtown, we also strategically went to two different locations. So it was, the second one was in more close proximity to more of the retail businesses.
Can I add something to that? Mr. Rux, we also did present to the chairs of the neighborhood associations and asked that if they wanted us to come to their neighborhood associations, we would. Otherwise, we gave them information to take back to them. Yes, Counselor Dickey.
Thanks. And I guess my response would be, and I know you did a lot of outreach, so I appreciate that. And I know, I mean, you can't get to every neighborhood association, but I, you know, I think about people who would be driving in from Kaiser or somewhere, asking them to come here. I don't know. It just seems like maybe it would, it would have been helpful to have gotten perspective out rather than right downtown because I think you're going to kind of get people that kind of frequent downtown already anyway. And maybe there are barriers to people coming downtown for parking. But that's, but I'm not suggesting we go out and do that now. And the other question that I have is, and I know we're real preliminary and we have not even made a decision here, but when you're talking about parking meters with technology, I'm just wondering if, or have you looked at the kinds of parking meters that are available? And I ask just because where I work, we have Windows 2003. We're going to get an upgrade to Windows 2007, which still puts us six years behind. So I'm just, you know, I'm hoping that as you look at the technology or if, you know, when we get to that point, if we get there, would you be looking at the, you know, parking meters 2013 or would it be parking meters 2005 that can take a credit card or, you know? So would you be looking at the latest and greatest or have you gotten to that point yet?
Parking Task Force did not drill down into the specifics. They did get presentation and information about the different types of technologies. So the pay and display stations that are available, kind of the attributes and capabilities of those. And then there are meter heads, similar to what we have out at the Capitol Mall now, but they're upgraded so that they do take debit cards and credit cards. So they looked at that. If the council was to move forward with this, part of that financial analysis and the implementation is to start to drill down on the technology and look at that technology. Parking Task Force did look at the capabilities of debit cards, credit cards, prepaid cards. It was brought up at one of the open houses about linking that card with Salem-Kaiser Transit so that if you had an employer and they put so many dollars on a prepaid card that could use it for transit as well as parking meters. But we'd be looking at the new technology so that you can use smartphones and you can use your computer and so forth in order to access any of the technology that would, the hardware, I should say this there, as well as the software. But the software also has to be compatible with the city system. So that's another component we have to work with IT and finance on.
All right. Counselor Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Maybe two, three questions, Doug. And if the information isn't readily available tonight, when, bring it forward, please, when it is ready. But I just want to make sure I get this straight. We have urban renewal funds that are taken from property tax that don't go to our general fund. They're set aside for economic development in the downtown area. And what we've been doing for the last X number of years is using those urban renewal funds to subsidize parking. So pardon me for using the word subsidized, but we've been using urban renewal funds where, to make, as a stopgap. So in addition to the minimum parking tax that businesses pay, we've also been paying out of the urban renewal funds and collecting quarters and dimes. Is that correct?
Yes. Over the past five years, six years, excuse me, there have been $5.1 million of urban renewal funds utilized and transferred over into the parking fund to do capital improvements to the parking garages. At the same time, there's been $975,000 of lease hold funds, the revenue that's generated out of the rental spaces, out of the Shemecata and Liberty Parkades, have been transferred over in the parking fund for operational expenses. So over six years, it's been $6.1 million gone into the parking fund for that operation. Projecting forward, the Parking Task Force asked us to look at that, and on the average, it's $700,000 a year for the next five years. $500,000 of that, on an average, is urban renewal funds to address capital issues with the parking garages.
So when we formed this taxing district, which is a taxing district, years ago, it was anticipated that that would pay for the upkeep of the garages and for the management of a parking management system in the city, when it was done 30 years ago or whenever.
In 1982, in the system, fiscal year 1982, '83, when it went into place, the minimum tax that was paid for the downtown was $60 a year. I think there were questions, and there still are some questions by task force members, about looking at that amount of tax that's created in order to operate. Did it keep pace with the maintenance and capital and operational expenses? And when they started looking at the financial numbers, they started to see, no, we've been spending a lot of money, but urban renewal and lease hold money in order to backfill into the parking fund, and that would need to continue forward without finding a sustainable model.
Okay. Because it didn't keep up, we've been subsidizing it.
Correct.
So the question that I have, I just want to make sure I understand that, is if we keep doing what we're doing now, the subsidizing, you know, what's going to happen? Just, you know, three years from now or five years from now, what?
Well, with the urban renewal dollars, so if you were to look forward in the next five years and a half a million dollars a year, you could ask the question about opportunity costs, what things in the urban renewal program would not get done. There's the Downtown Strategic Action Plan that the council adopted in 2011, implementing that. There's the Downtown Housing Investment Strategy the council's had, well, I should say, the agency board has had a work session on. The council and the agency have had a work session on the mobility study and the implementation of recommendations coming out of that. In the last fiscal year, in 1213, we let out a little, under $900,000 in toolbox grant funds for improvements to buildings interior and exterior in the downtown. There was a million dollars budgeted again this year. Could there be more? There's the Toolbox Loan Program. There are projects in the urban renewal plan about doing streetscape improvements. If you go into the north downtown, what type of transportation, sewer, water, storms, improvements need to be done in order to partner with private development to attract the 800 dwelling units that are envisioned could occur in the north downtown? So those are those opportunities that you could have that are already listed in plans, but a half a million dollars a year going into the parking fund. Does it diminish those?
You can make the case, in the last five years, we've been foregoing opportunities for downtown improvements. Because we've been spending money subsidizing parking. Parking isn't free in Salem, is it?
Parking is not free. Parking has to be paid somehow.
Somebody's paying for that.
Yes.
And that money originally could have gone to the general fund to pay for police fire, but we and the voters, Senate Urban Renewal, and it was meant for urban renewal projects.
Think of it as, like a trust fund, urban renewal is dedicated funds for a specific area that you can only spend for projects that are listed in the urban renewal plan.
And sadly enough, parking subsidy has been one of those. So I guess I want to make sure I understand that. In the future, will, charging for parking, is there any study that suggests that that hurts or helps businesses in the long run or even in the short run?
The Parking Task Force asked that question in one of the slides in the presentation. Looked at Tacoma, the Lloyd District in Oregon City. They also looked at Ventura, California. And Parking Task Force has a video on Old Pasadena that have implemented on-street, paid-on-street parking system. And in each of those cases, they have been viable. But I think if you were, wanted us to follow up, we could bring some additional information back at a later date.
Sure. And I'm also concerned that we have vacancy rates on second floors where urban renewal funds could have been used to have made, helped affect the improvements necessary. Again, I always go back to, are we really fully utilizing what we have now? We have vacancies in some of the parking garages, and we have a number of buildings with second stories that can't be accessed just due to the high cost of meeting ADA requirements. So I guess I'd like to see some of the opportunities that we could be funding if, in fact, that money wasn't being used as a subsidy for parking. Thank you.
We have Counselor Clausen and then Counselor Bernard, and then Counselor Nanki.
Mr. Rux, so I just want to pose the question so I understand it. The idea here is paid-on-street parking is paid by customers versus the parking system otherwise is paid by business and property owners. Is that correct? If we keep the parking tax?
The proposal from the Parking Task Force is to move to a customer-based system so the customer would pay to park on the street. The current system is a combination of tax on businesses and permit fees that are paid by employees who work in the downtown and purchase permits to park in either the Liberty, the Shemecata, or Marion Parkade, or surface lots that we have over at Riverfront Park or the, what we call the PGE Lot just south of Union Street.
Okay. And have any other ideas of funding for the parking area been brought forward by the task force or by anybody to the task force for other mechanisms of funding than through the URA?
The task force looked at expanding the parking district itself to see if that would generate enough revenue to fill that $700,000 gap, and it did not do that. They looked at, could you extend the hours of enforcement for the parking enforcement officers? And, but there was a cost of having staffing, but the revenue for that goes to municipal court, not back to the parking fund. They looked at increasing the cost of the monthly permits for full-time or part-time parkers, but that's based upon the demand system and that price point right now. And we have different price points, and each garage is a little bit different. So those are some of the examples. There was also brought up, what if you could pay $1 to park in a parking garage? That issue we looked at and shared is that, well, with $1, you take all of the people who are paying the current permits on a monthly basis, and they could park for a dollar as well. That actually did the inverse. It increased the gap to about $950,000 from the $700,000. So they looked at a number of different options.
Okay. And no other funding ideas have come from outside the task force?
No.
For consideration. On another line here, if I may, Mayor, on, as far as future decisions goes, on the, on slide 13 of your presentation, there's some ideas of kind of some council updates and stuff. I'm interested in, what are future decisions if this was approved? What are future decisions council is making? I mean, I'm interested because I'm curious, and it's not in this public hearing, but what are we doing on the Capitol Mall? Are we going to get a decision on bonds revenue or bond issuances or what system we're going on? Or, you know, when do we start talking about rates and timeframes if this system went forward?
Well, I can start with the Capitol Mall area. The council authorized back in January that we go upgrade the technology in the Capitol Mall. So the first step of that was doing utilization studies to look at how long people park in the various spaces that are there. So we did one part of the study during the legislative session back in March, and we'll be doing another one in September. And then the consultant will be reconciling that information to draw an average. Once we have the utilization, then we need to have the discussions about what type of technology would be workable. And there are some subset issues with that. There is, what does a streetscape look like? So you could take the existing poles and put a new meter head on them that accepts a debit and credit cards. Well, that's one way of doing it. Or you could look at pay and display. We need to do some coordination with community development because that affects the streetscape as well as public works. Once we kind of identify the options for the technology, we'd be doing a check-in with you at the council, say, this is what we've learned. These are our option for technology, and these are a range of the costs. We also need to model all of that to say, okay, depending on technology that's selected, which one is the most cost-effective? Do we purchase? Do we lease? There are choices there. What's the payback period if we do purchase? We looked at and modeled five years. And so we start to look at that. And so we'd be coming back to council and checking with you, making sure, is this still appropriate? Are we on the correct path? That same model would be used for the downtown if you were to go to paid parking. There, though, we have to work with business owners, property owners in the downtown area. At the Capitol Mall, we're working mostly with the state of Oregon, and we've been in communication with Department of Administrative Services as well as the legislative office, and they're aware that that's coming over in the Capitol Mall. But there's all those check-in points. So might look at it like, is there a possibility of an off-ramp in the downtown area? And I believe that members of the Parking Task Force would say, yeah, you know, we look at it, and if there's something that doesn't look correct for the council, they have a choice to move forward or to stop. And the stopping, then you have to look at, what are the options then?
So these council slash public updates are decision points where you have to make a decision on the go-forward?
We didn't do a very, a real detailed and robust, here are the next steps. And we would need to continue to work with the Parking Task Force, the co-chairs, and City Manager Norris to try to refine that. But I think that there would be a lot of opportunities, yes, those check-in points we bring to council, bring a report for you to consider and look at and say, yes, you agree, or no, you may have questions. You might ask us to go back and look at some other information.
I appreciate that. I think I'm just a little, I want to make sure that we've got that relatively defined for, as we make the decision, just so we know when, when we're coming back and when we get to make decisions and so on and so forth. Because, you know, like, a lot of the things you just mentioned are big differences on how a system goes in. And I think, you know, I, for one, Counselor, would be interested in being able to make some decisions as we move forward.
It was not the intent or envision that the staff would just move forward and do this, is that we need to be checking in with our elected body to give us, give us the guidance, are we going the right direction? Are we making the right choices? Are there other things that we can consider?
And any decisions about funding would be made by city council.
Right.
Yeah.
Is it, is it possible to detail what those decisions are going forward or is it kind of too unclear until more research is done?
I think we could do that fairly completely. Once council makes this decision, we haven't wanted to get ahead of the decision before you now on the Parking Task Force recommendations. But if council decides you want to go forward, then we can give you a pretty detailed list, I think, of how we see the process working.
Okay. Okay.
Counsel Bennett, followed by Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, a small comment, and then I'll ask my question. I just wanted to respond back to Counselor Dickey's comment. I was pleasantly surprised the other day when I walked downtown to a new restaurant that used to be where Quiznos was, and I can't think of the name of it, but it's a nice little deli in there, and I passed by the Blue Diamond parking lot that's over there on the corner of Chimaqueta and High, and they've got a pay-and-display parking system. So I guess Salem has got its first. I was not aware it was there, but if you're looking for one in Salem, there's an example. I enjoyed this conversation. Six years ago, I chaired a committee that put in the two-hour time-limited downtown parking, and we had similar at the board level conversation. It is, it comes to my mind that it is not just a parking problem, it's a revenue problem. It's not a revenue problem, it's a parking problem. It's both. And so both of those issues need to be discussed. In West Salem, when I was chairing the Urban Renewal Board, we did a parking study, the Edgewater Second Street, and basically the conclusion was, we don't have a parking problem in West Salem. Yet if you looked at the actual data, you would have found that the streets between Rosemont and Kingwood were basically 100% filled at 100% of the time, basically, and then further to the east of that, it was unused, completely unused. But overall, it was termed, we didn't have a parking problem. I want to address the 85% rule with that in mind, and that's what I've asked staff, and I really would like to have that more clarified. 85%, I'm just going to throw it back, Doug. Can you please respond to the 85? What does that mean, the 85% rule?
85% rule, the parking space is being utilized 85% of the time.
So I have not seen a staff report yet. I'm still looking for it. Do we meet that threshold?
In the central downtown area, between Center Street and State Street, Commercial Street and Church Street, the last utilization study that was done was we were at 92%. So above the 85%. The council, sitting back in 2006 when they adopted the, accepted the downtown parking recommendations at that time, included the 85% rule. The 85% rule is also in the West Salem parking plan. And in the Parking Task Force work that was done, the Community Development Department got a TGM grant and looked at kind of the north downtown, the Broadway area, and what will be coming back to you at a date to be determined will be a recommendation, and it will include an 85% rule as well. But we can actually come back at a later date and kind of write that out, how the 85% rule works, so the entire council is very clear about that.
Thank you. And the other question I had goes in the other direction, as I just mentioned, parking problem, revenue problem. I also have to look at, not revenue, but expense issue. I really haven't seen, I was confused when I looked at certain things. We're paying for an economic improvement district downtown that's supposed to supply things like cleanliness, cleaning up downtown, and flower baskets, yet when I looked at the budget from the parking district, it included things like flower baskets and cleaning. So I'm not sure who's paying for that, or if they're both paying for the same thing.
The, in the staff report that you have this evening, we put the 1213, the fiscal year 1213 budget numbers in there. When we, Parking Staff, when the Parking Task Force started, we were looking at 1112 numbers and transitioned to 1213 number because that was the current fiscal year. The operational expense for the parking district is just a little less than $1.1 million. When you added in the capital in that prior fiscal year, that's when it jumped, bumped up to over $2 million, and then there was a contingency. In this fiscal year, again, is that operational expense is around $1.1 million, and earlier this evening, there was the grant agreement that moved $712,000 of urban renewal funds over into the parking fund to do capital improvements for the parking garages. There is a component of the parking fund that is economic promotion, and the trend has been, over the last several years, is about $100,000 have been utilized of parking fund dollars to help do promotion on the economic vibrancy of the downtown area. In the current fiscal year budget, it's only $75,000. The EID is separate, a separate program that's done, but there are some parallels and similarities to what it is that they do in the programs that they support. What has been used in the past for parking fund is they have done things like watering and flower baskets as part of that promotion. I know City Manager Norris has been working with the downtown group, and I know that Counsel Bennett pulled an issue that will, we talked about, I think will help maybe clarify a little bit more of how the EID money works and what it's being used for.
My big issue, I guess, here is, I just, I'm looking for information, and for me right now, I'm not quite set because there's, I'm always getting an answer, but I'm not getting all the answers yet. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Nanki, followed by Counselor Dickey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And my issue was kind of a follow-on from Counselor Clem's regarding the potential impacts to business, and I know we'd had a brief meeting and talked about that a little bit as well. And we talked about a couple of different jurisdictions, but I'd like to see a little broader survey of some to see what the impacts were, what were they like before, to try to at least get something out there that matches kind of what our situation is. I don't know how difficult that is, but...
It's information that we do have, and so we can bring that back.
Because I hear, we've gotten a couple of correspondences regarding, oh, we're going to see a 20% dip in businesses coming, or people coming downtown to shop.
Well...
And I didn't know if that was front-end dip, as people first said, well, do I really? And then it was like, yeah, we want to go downtown.
The issue there is that the modeling that was done and shared with the Parking Task Force when they were trying to establish a range of what a rate may be, is that it was modeled that there would be a 20%, what we called leakage rate, on the utilization of those parking spaces because a consumer would go to a different, like a parking garage, because now a parking garage is free. And so that would free up that space, have more open space time. That was not that 20% of the businesses would go away. It was a very conservative model to try to help establish what a possible rate may be per hour.
If I could say that in a little different terms, for our financial modeling, we assumed that every space would be used 80% of the time. Didn't have anything to do with businesses' income decreasing. It was just conservatively modeling how often we thought the space would be occupied.
But it would still be interesting to know what happens to customers and customers' first impressions and how they react over time to the implementation of some kind of paid parking. I know personally, I hate seeing these things on every space, and I would hopefully would use technology that I'm sure will be changing rather rapidly in the near future, seeing how it's progressed over the last 10 years, to where now everybody's dropping their landlines, and these things live on them, and you can't even get somebody's attention because they're trying to pay for parking.
We've heard, we've heard from the open houses that we had comments were provided about a concern of, you are going to have a parking meter of some type at every stall. That was not discussed by the Parking Task Force. It was look at the technology, and we have to work with public works and community development about what their parents, what we're trying to do downtown. So it's appropriate. We also heard recently at one of the neighborhood meetings, concern expressed about our elderly residents who don't have debit cards or credit cards, and how would they be able to come downtown? And it was, you still need to be able to take cash and coin. Technology does that. But that's part of that information gathering, of that implementation, to feed in to what type of technology would be the best to address the unique characteristics of Salem's downtown area, and then customize a system that meets those particular demands and needs.
You could just have a couple of those old-style meters that people would say, I don't have any money, how am I going to park there? And they'd be open for those people who only carry around cash.
As you have in your, in your staff report and your information, is that there would be, right now, given the demand in the parking areas, 1,279 free parking spaces in the three parking garages that could be utilized.
Could we also have the information brought on, the previous parking surveys downtown? I know we've done at least two of them, I think, since we were here, and we talked about that 85% coming up and when we'd actually hit it, and it'd be nice to see if we actually are following that path that was originally, or did something shift on it? Because you'd figure, if our utilization is going up, then our downtown must be having more customers in it, which would be interesting to see how those numbers actually align with...
Of course, we can bring that back.
And if I may, on the last thing?
Yes.
If we're using urban renewal monies to pay for things like parking garages, I'm sure the school district and the county are just really happy that those tax monies that they don't get are going to take care of a parking garage. So we have to look at it from that extent, as well as what an urban renewal area is, and how those taxes could be used by us and our general fund, but also by the other taxing jurisdictions that aren't getting them.
Thank you. Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. My question is similar to Counselor Clausen, kind of understanding what the process is here, and where do we go from here? We spent a lot of time talking about parking meters because that is the biggest issue here, the biggest expense, and there's a lot of research that needs to be done. But there are several other recommendations that the Parking Task Force has made, and so, I mean, it sounds like with parking meters, you know, you've talked about, you're going to do some research, you'll bring us back, you know, here's a report, do you want to do it, do you not want to do it? So if we move forward with any or all of these Parking Task Force recommendations, are they, the other things going to happen? For example, the annual review of all parking fees and fines? If we move forward tonight, does that just automatically happen? Doesn't come back to us? Or evaluating the residential permit program, does that? So I just want to understand the process at the point that if we decided to move forward with this or not, are these all going to come back to us, or just certain components?
Well, in the recommendation is you could accept all or a portion of the Parking Task Force recommendations. So in regards to looking at all the fees and fines on an annual basis, if you accepted that, then it becomes an administrative function to look at those fees and fines on an annual basis, and that rolled into the budget process for the Budget Committee and the City Council to look at. If you accepted the recommendation about expanding the Capitol Mall area by approximately three blocks, as graphically shown in your packet or in this PowerPoint presentation, that would mean as we go through and look at the technology upgrades that you've already approved, we will then look at where in that expanded area can that technology also be installed? And that's part of the utilization studies that are being looked at. There was another one. Oh, the residential permits. The residential permits. If you were to move forward with that, is, we did not program any funds this fiscal year to look at that RP program. I would look at that, is that something would come up in the upcoming 1415 as a possibility? So that would be something, again, we'd have to propose through the budget process, work with the city manager's office on, and then we also have to coordinate with our Community Development Department and our Public Works, because basically you've got three departments that are involved in that. And look at what kind of adjustments or modifications could be done. On the establishing the consistent parking on-street regulations, if you accepted that recommendation, that would be for staff, parking staff and public work staff to go out and look at those regulations and see where we've got some anomalies. We had some. We had the example of downtown, we had a block that didn't have the two-hour signs. We have an issue by Commissioner Montano's Tipperary Office, is that we've got different times and different meters that are there. And so we've cataloged and have that information, and that would be a progratic. But we could come back again and say, okay, here are all of the specifics for this, lay it out in a matrix, and here's what we're going to do, is more of an information report. Council could then see that, and they could give us, and you can call it, and we give us some feedback and guidance about, well, maybe we want to look at this one just a little bit differently, or this issue a little bit differently. So the intent would be to keep you involved and engaged as we move forward with all aspects of accepting any and/or all of these recommendations.
All right. Are there further questions by counselors? Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Tesler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to dovetail on Counselor Dickey's question. Can you give us a chart that shows all these next steps?
Yes, we could develop that.
Okay. Because I think that's at the heart of, I think we're only in about chapter two or three of about an eight-chapter thing here, so I think it would be helpful for us to understand at least in a chart what the next steps are.
A little more specificity in those next steps. Okay.
Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I have a question about the percentage of nonprofits downtown. There was a question that was asked of me. I really don't know. Do you?
I do not have that information off the top of my head, but my staff may have.
Okay. As they furiously look through their three-wing binder, I am just curious about that because, I mean, depending on what the percentage is, I just wonder if you factored in, if you do put in meters and paid parking, are you going to account for this loss of revenue? Because I was told the percentage is fairly high. I don't know that.
Nonprofits currently do not pay the parking tax downtown.
That's correct. So, okay. All right. That answers my question.
Other counselors, other questions? I think staff might have an answer to the question.
If you'll come to the podium. Sarah Bratcher, Urban Development Department. The number on the nonprofits is from 2011, 2012, so I do apologize for that. However, we had 28 businesses at that time that were exempt from the parking tax, and that was based off of a total of 520 that year.
28 out of 520?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for finding that for us. Good. Okay. All right. If there are no further questions for staff, we will close the hearing. Counselor Bennett, did you want to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I move to continue the hearing to August 26.
And I'd like to ask a pointed clarification. Would testimony still be, would we remain open for testimony? Is that your intention?
Yeah, my intention, Madam Mayor, is to allow for further written as well as continued public discussion, public testimony. Trying to think of the word.
Okay. On August 26?
On August 26.
Okay. All right.
Madam Mayor, to speak to the motion, we have, there were a lot of...
Just a second, let me, for clarification. Moved by Counselor Bennett and who seconded by Counselor Clem. Thank you.
Sorry.
Now discussion.
Okay. Madam Mayor, the intention is to follow up on the number of questions that have been raised by the members of the City Council to make sure we have answers. And I thought some of the issues raised by members of the public, to get some answers on some of the questions we heard, I think it'll take the staff some time. I'm hoping we'll also have a real, a real good look at avoided costs, and I would appreciate a quick look at the, I heard about a petition tonight. I'd like to have a quick look at that petition as part of that as well. That sounded ominous to me. It sounded like a decision to invite all state workers to move downtown and park all day for free. So I want to make sure I understand what folks are talking about up there.
Okay. All right. It's been moved and moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Clem, to keep the hearing open for both public and on August 26, oral testimony. Is that correct? All right. Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Do we want to close the testimony as we have done in other instances, maybe the Friday night before that?
The written test, we're going to have the oral thing, but Madam...
So the intent is to have oral testimony the night of the 20?
As well.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I wanted to be clarifying. Clarifying that as well. Okay. So the motion on the floor is to continue the public hearing until August 26, and as a side note, that would include open during that period of time for written testimony, and there'll be more public testimony the night of August 26. All right. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. We, I think I'll give everybody a chance to stretch and move around a little bit. Some people may want to leave the chambers. Some people may want to leave the chambers if this, if your portion of the meeting is over. None of the counselors can do that, however. You've got to stay.
But I will say that we have very scarce resources, and I know that. And I think the county does too. And so, I don't want this to sink into the oblivion of we have scarce resources and we cannot address it. I will say that I live next to a path two. And years ago, when I first moved in, I was talking to a neighbor about, well, there was a s- I was joking about this, but there was a street light put on this path that's right outside my backyard. And it's kind of bright, but, you know. And the neighbor says, "You know what? You can't complain about the street light because we used to have all kinds of issues on this path. We used to have people using drugs and partying and doing all of those things. Now I just have a problem with dog poop, which is, you know, considerably better than needles." But, you know, I really, I don't, when you tell me this, I mean, I've heard this before from other people. I've heard this about people who have needles in their front yard. One of the first neighborhood associations I went to said, "We have a problem with people using drugs. Do you think the city can give us a Sharps container?" You know? I mean, that was, they were trying to address the problem, and you are too. And, you know, but your problem has ballooned to the point where it can't be addressed with a Sharps container. And so, I just, I really have to say, I'm gonna be shoulder to shoulder, right behind Brad on, or Councilor Nanki on this one, because I was kind of unhappy to see this, because I don't know if this is the solution for the problem. That's what I'm saying. And I was, interesting to hear that you are not involved either, so I think we should rethink that kind of communication, too. So, anyway, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Brentano?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council of San Brentano. I didn't say last time, 605 West Main Street Sublimity. I think it's like Ward Way Out There or something. I had the opportunity, well, first of all, I should start out. I am speaking just for myself. Normally, we'd have a meeting Monday mornings, commissioners were, Commissioner Carlson, for example, was an ACO conference, so we did not have that meeting. We would have discussed this, so I can only speak for myself. You do have a letter from us that indicates just like this recommendation that we want to work with you and to make it better. Now, I took the opportunity, I was invited to come out, I believe it was Thursday night, spent about an hour and a half looking at it, and somehow being there is different than pictures and talking about it. And I'm fully sympathetic to their problems. But, I also saw 20 to 30 pretty legitimate people come through there using it. And so, that leads me to come back to our recommendation. The best shot is to keep it open, but to make it better. I have a list, I don't want to prejudice this group or make statements for the board that I can't back up, but I know what I do personally in terms of cleaning it up and talk to them about it quite a bit. So, that's my first choice, is to have the county and the city do a number of, and they're not expensive items, and I can't believe that we don't have resources to do, to try to make it better. And then frankly, if that doesn't work, then I would look at closing it down. But I think, and I feel like once, once you make it better to pass through, take away the areas that are security risks, keep it all visible, lit, provide some garbage collection, I mean, and even a camera, different things like this. And then, the people that I saw that were legitimate using it can continue, and hopefully things all get better. But again, if it doesn't, then I'd look the other way, too.
Councilor Clausen, and then Councilor Tesler.
Thank you, Commissioner Brentano. I think I got questions for staff. I'm trying to remember our recommend, or our motion for staff, it was two meetings ago, I think it was. And I think it was just to kind of come back, take a preliminary look at it, and come back with a general update. Am I right on that? Just kind of what's the background, what's going on here? It's pretty much the-
Yes, and I think it may have said to bring back an option.
Because we didn't necessarily say, hey, come back with a solution. And I don't think anybody could have realistically expected for that. I'm wondering, you know, can we speed up the timeframe? Is that realistic? Can we do something on that? I mean, I look at it, and, you know, I like the idea of a livable, walkable Salem, and I think about living just like right there on the other side of Munkers, and I gotta walk three blocks to get over to a really legitimate shopping area. And that's pretty frustrating to me. And the connectivity is, I think, very important, and we have a lot of other connections similar to that that are actually feasible and done well, and don't hurt the neighbors, and so on and so forth. I like the idea of trying to work on this and trying to come up with something. I mean, goodness, if nothing else, it's connect Elma through and make it connected. But, you know, that's a really expensive option, so.
The intent is to do something quickly. So, and, you know, it's the timing with getting the county and the city and the neighbors who want to be involved together, and it sounds like maybe this school, it sounds like WinCo might be a good partner. But I think we can use some of our neighborhood people to pull the right people together and come up with some options.
Okay. I think maybe that urgency isn't felt in the staff report, and I'm wondering if maybe we can make some sort of recommendation that, or resolution or whatever we're doing tonight to provide that urgency, and I'm looking to-
Let's have our first meeting within two weeks.
Councilor Tesler.
Thank you for that. And I also went over there and looked at it, too, because it wasn't a land use still, so, and I also had some ideas. And I really, I think there's some kind of quick fix stuff, and then there's some stuff that's gonna take a while. And, you know, I'm just, I just want us to make sure that if we say we're gonna address these issues, we're gonna address these issues. I mean, we're gonna address the issues as long as it takes. We're not gonna just go in, put a Band-Aid, and leave. That's my main concern, because these are, some of these issues are gonna take a little while. And, but I think that we can do it. I also just wanted to kind of put in a plug to Commissioner Brentano, is that this is one of the many issues that Brad and I experienced with the interface with the county. And we, I often get people who are very frustrated because they live right on the break. And so, they come to me, I can't really do much, they go to the county, the county, you know, so maybe this can be a future discussion about how to work on these issues, because we do share these jurisdictions. And unfortunately, these people that live in between feel like they live in a DMZ, because they don't know, I mean, I think even our own jurisdictional parties are confused about who should be, address these issues. Is it a city or a county, or should we work together? So, just a plug for, you know, maybe this can be a good conversation on how we can work together on these jurisdictional issues, because sometimes it can be quite frustrating.
I'm sure. Yes, I think you're right, this could be a good model for that.
Okay. And no offense to Commissioner Brentano, because I really do want to work on that relationship and see that relationship flourish, because it's the people that suffer if we don't work together.
Right.
Good point, excellent point. Councilor Dickey?
Yeah, first, I would second Counselor Tesler's comments about this maybe being a model, because, I mean, I'm right there with you, you know, I could throw a rock at my neighbor's house who lives in the county, and so, I hear it a lot, and it's like, I can't help you, sorry. So, that would be great if this is, provides, you know, some sort of a framework for us to maybe address some of the issues that come up that we haven't been able to in the past. I guess my question comment is, well, first of all, I felt your frustration when you were speaking, I mean, I just wanted to, you know, if that would have been me, you were very calm, I would have, you did a great job. And I just, I really heard, you know, what the Mr. Decker from the school and the volunteer gentleman who was here, I mean, I just, that just, sickening to me to think that we've got school kids, that that is their route, that they might go to the grocery store, they might get to school or whatever, and they, you know, the school won't let them because of the conditions there. And so, I, my question comment is, can we get an update about what's going on? So, if we have short-term fixes, long-term fixes, or we come to an impasse where it's like, okay, we've just got to close this down, I mean, can we have some regular updates about what's happening here, how the progress is going? And I'm not sure how often that would be, but it sounds like, you know, things are gonna get moving very quickly, so I'd like to know, you know, I don't know. I don't know how long the process will take, I'm not sure, but something-
You know, we can give you an update on, just let you know when the meetings are scheduled, maybe at your August 5th meeting, and then give you an update on August 26th. Our Public Works Department is expert at dealing with these issues, and we have very good working relationships with staff at the county. We have a lot of resources in the Police Department and other places. The Sheriff's Department, I'm sure, that can provide some crime prevention help to us. So, I, you know, if we, if we can't fix a walkway, there's some other problem. I'm sure we can do that, and I'm sure we can do it quickly. We have a lot of good resources, a lot of good people.
All right. Councilor Benarz?
Quick question, and I may be opening a Pandora's Box here a little bit, but back in 2004, when the development first came in, they had to put up a wall, an eight-foot wall. The people who were constructing the strip mall there asked to have a six-foot concrete wall, and it was done so with the condition of the gate be put at that opening. And apparently, the neighbors didn't like the gate, removed the gate. Is there nothing that says back to the landowner that he needs to maintain that gate? And this is a legal question? I mean, it's-
You know, I think those are all issues we can explore. Some of this, as you know, a little bit of it's in the city, you know, as we've been talking, some of it's in the county, and I think just doing the fact-finding and seeing what the options are would be part of how we'll go forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilor Nanki, I'm sorry.
Or member, Member Commissioner, Councilor Nanki. In that light, there were some issues in regards to staff's interpretation on whether or not we could force them to lock it or not lock it, and so, we came to the realization that we were not able to enforce the locking of that in its current format. So, that being said, in regards to Counselor Dickey's item, in Counselor comment sections in subsequent meetings, I can just give a brief update, too, on what we're doing, which, rather than staff writing lots of reports and stuff.
That'd be great. All right. Any further discussion on this item? All right. Then I would call for the question, which I believe was moved by Counselor Nanki and seconded by, was it, who seconded? Oh, Counselor Clausen, thank you. And that recommendation is, did you want to form a new motion, actually, Counselor, or you want to support this motion without having to enter into the record anything about what we're directing staff to do specifically as a result of this discussion? Now's your chance.
I think there's a whole bunch of people, and we really won't know what all the best options are. There are some that people have predetermined notions on, we may or may not find that they're workable, so I think it needs to have some flexibility. My concern was just to make sure it happens in an expeditious fashion, so that there's some forward progress, which hopefully will mean that conditions improve on a daily basis.
All right. All right. But you're confident that the motion, as it is written, satisfies what, the intent of what you've said this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. 3.3C was pulled by Counselor Bennett. Counselor Bennett, would you like to introduce that item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just thought I'd take this opportunity, in case anyone missed it the first time, to bring you back to the situation in our parking system. This is a grant moving $712,000 from the Urban Renewal Agency to the city. And I'm just, I think it's really important to deal with our parking garages. This is what we were talking about tonight. This is what we've been trying to deal with in the Parking Task Force. This money is a huge missed opportunity. It's a set of missed opportunities to be putting this money into those 40-year-old garages because we can't figure out another way to pay for them. So, I just wanted to highlight this one more time. This is, this to me is sort of, I don't know, it's a legacy issue for us from another, from another batch of councilors and councils over the years that have been unwilling to take on a very difficult issue, and I'm just really pleased we're at least talking about it, if nothing else.
Good. All right. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett, seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the staff recommendation. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And item 3.3D was also pulled by Counselor Bennett.
Yeah.
Would you like to present a motion on that?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the staff recommendation, and is there a discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. We've had a number of questions about the Economic Improvement District downtown, and I thought this would be a good chance to ask the city manager to just give us a little update. This involves $13,744.26 of funds from that, and I thought it'd just be a good chance to talk about it.
Right. And as your staff report shows, that these funds are to receive city council approval for some commitments that Salem Downtown Partnership had made, but they were not programs approved by the city, and so, we need city council's approval to make those payments. So, that's what the staff report is about. In terms of the EID, as you know, we have a downtown steering committee who's working, meeting regularly to talk about downtown issues. We have, just today, went over the proposed budget with John Wells and Doug Rex and Sri Waghren for the EID. We'll be presenting that this week at our meeting with the downtown steering committee, and then bringing it to city council on August 5th. Essentially, we have beautification and cleanliness in it. We've started, I hope you've all noticed, that the downtown looks a lot shinier and it's cleaner. We have a clean team working every day, Monday through Saturday, actually, cleaning the downtown just regularly. I've heard lots of positive comments about that already. We are working on marketing, putting together a website, we'll have new banners going up. There'll be two different banners this year, and then two additional ones next year. First Wednesdays are part of it. And that $100,000 from the parking fund, when we started the Economic Improvement District now about four years ago, four, five years ago, five, council authorized using $100,000 from the parking fund just to help with some of the projects that would happen down there. This year, we've continued that, and then this year, budget is $75,000. So, that does also pay for some of the cleanliness and watering the flower baskets and some of the flower baskets. So, it's really extending the revenue from the EID to go a little farther with helping the appearance and the activity of the Economic Improvement District. I am going to have another, we're also working on holiday displays, what those will be this year, and then I'm forming another subcommittee to work on economic impact projects, because it's supposed to be Economic Improvement District, and we want to make sure that we are measuring that and there is economic improvement in downtown. So, a group of the downtown property owners and businesses have agreed to be on that committee as well. We will be, let me just say one thing about communications. We will also, in addition to taking, bringing it to the council and taking it to the steering committee, we'll be sending a letter to all of the property owners who pay into the Economic Improvement District, just to update them again about where we are and what the budget is and what projects we're working on.
Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Morris, I'm sorry, Linda, where's the money coming from?
We have the Economic Improvement District funds.
Okay, it's coming out of-
Yeah, this is coming out of the EID.
Okay. I wanted to make sure I understood who is paying for this one.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion? I'll call for the motion. Counselor Bennett moved, and Counselor Tesler, I believe it was, seconded, to move staff recommendation to authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement as stated in your report. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Moving down to unfinished business, we have none, and I draw your attention to information reports that are in the packet, one of which has to do with the Mill Creek Corporate Center. I'd just like to ask the city manager for a minute to give a little quick rundown on that. It's the one that we talked about in the council.
Yes, yes. This is actually a small replat of where the wetlands are, but the thing I was talking to the mayor and then council president about is that we're just finishing the planting of the wetlands, so all of that significant work has been done. The water looping is completed, we'll be doing some work on Almsville Highway, and very shortly, we'll be starting the Mill Creek Reservoir. So, I just wanted to give you an update about that. So, projects are continuing to move forward, and we have a lot of great industrial land there, and are talking to more businesses about, who are interested in looking at that for relocation. Mr. Wells, is there anything else you'd like to say?
I think you covered it. The replat is really the result of some requirements that we have, not only from the, our federal EDA grant, that require us to make sure that the property boundaries are correct with what we said they were when we applied for this a few years ago. And to make sure it complies with the wetlands permit that the state received from Corps of Engineers and state lands. And the reason that we're doing this is that the Corps permit doesn't allow a road into the wetlands, and a piece of our road is in the wetlands, and we're having to work with the state to correct that. That's where we are.
Thank you very much. All right. Another item under our information reports is item C, and that has to do with the Open Streets Community Event, and I believe we have a staff person here who's going to make some comments about that.
I think Corinne Fletcher, our neighborhood liaison staff who's helped put all this together, is going to just give you a briefing.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor and councilors, my name is Corinne Fletcher, and I'm a Neighborhood Services Specialist with the City of Salem. So, I've been working for several months now on organizing an Open Streets event. Open Street initiatives take place all over the world. They temporarily close down a route to automobiles and open them up to people on foot, on bicycles. They are a way to promote physical activity and health and community building. And so, I've been working on an Open Streets event for the second Sunday, or, yes, second Sunday in September, Sunday, September 8th, which will close down State Street between Front and Waverly, between 11 and 4, in addition to the loop around the Capitol Building. There are tons of participants, community organizations that are excited to partner and be involved in this event already, and I haven't even sent out the open vendor application form, which will go out and allow anyone who wants to participate to come and participate in the event. Examples, Hallie Ford Museum of Art will be opening the museum for free admissions that day, and we're talking about bringing some pieces onto the streets to create kind of a streets, a streets museum. There's gonna be a farmer's market at the Capitol Building. AC Gilbert's is involved, Salem Health is involved. All of the funding is covered. The only piece that comes out of the city's budget is my time that I've put into this and will be putting into organizing this event. So, I would love to hear any questions.
Are there any questions, from councilors? All right.
So, it's September 8th.
September 8th.
Beginning at what time?
11 o'clock.
And this is-
11 to 4.
This is like a big family activity.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make sure. And how do people find out about it on our website?
After tonight. We have, I have a lot of community neighbors' support who are helping me, giving their time donating. I have great graphic designers who are donating all of their time to work on this with me. And so, they have a website that's ready to go after tonight, SalemSundayStreets.org, and we can connect that with the city's website. But publicity will go out immediately if this is a go.
Excellent, excellent.
Go.
Other questions? More questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the enthusiasm, and a new event is always welcome. In this town, we love to party, so.
Thank you.
Right, right? Don't we?
Yeah.
I thought we did.
If I could just make a comment about one other thing along this line. The concerts at Riverfront Park that Tom Phone has been putting on, and you help sponsor every event. I think there were about 2,000 people there the first time. It was kind of my unofficial count, I think about 1,000 the second time. The next two concerts, ones this Wednesday, or one's the 31st, and then August 7th, I think are both wonderful groups and will be highly attended. So, these have been tremendously successful.
That's great. I'd just like to add, as long as we're talking about events, before, maybe it's before our next council meeting, but National Night Out, does anyone have the date for that?
Second.
It's the 6th, is it the 6th? Is it a Monday night or Tuesday night?
It's Tuesday.
That must be a Tuesday.
Yeah.
All right. Well, it's a great event. I know that the city participates, and the neighborhood associations are always heavily involved, and I just encourage all people out in the communities to get your neighborhoods together and have a block party and celebrate National Night Out.
That's right. And any councilors who'd like to go out with one of the teams, if you'll just let us know, we'd love to have you do that.
And people can request a member of the police department-
They can.
-to show up at him as well.
They can, and they can have mascots as well. It's a great event. Okay. Moving on to ordinances, would the city reporter please introduce the ordinances?
Ordinance Bill Number 2613 relating to establishing a new chapter, SRC Chapter 103 Skateboards, and amending SRC 100.010 and SRC 100.230.
Thank you. Counselor Bennett, do you make a motion on the first reading? Refresh my memory, is that what we do?
Yep.
What do we do on a first reading?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I move, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Dickey to move staff recommendation for the proposed ordinance bill 21, excuse me, 2613. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. And a, we have no second reading. No one has signed up for public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers that did want to comment tonight? All right. I have no item, but don't leave yet. We have a counselor's item, 10.2A. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending Salem Revised Code, SRC Chapter 149 Multiple Family High-Rise Residential, to allow replacement of existing single-family dwellings as an allowed use within this zoning district.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benarz. Is there discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just very briefly, this is a situation related to the high-rise zone, and the part of it that I'm most familiar with is just east of the Capitol Mall, generally between the Capitol Mall and the Historic District, if you're familiar with the Court Chamac and Historic District. What's happened there are there, that while being appropriately zoned for high-rise residential has maintained its single-family residential character, and in the normal single-family residential carry, the character, there's a turnover. And we're now finding that as people try to sell their homes, they have run into a situation inside this chapter that sets them up as conditional uses, and they're finding it very hard, if not impossible, to get loans. And we've had sale fails, we have people very concerned about putting their homes on the market. This would allow those single-family homes to remain a permitted use rather than a conditional use. The conditional use, as you'll recall, creates a real problem if your house burns down or something like that. I mean, it just creates big problems relative to that. This has been taken on by the UDC Committee. They were planning on bringing the entire, this as part of a- They were planning on bringing the entire, this as part of a larger batch of changes to the zone code to you in December. I've asked to have this exercise brought to you immediately, because this is really time-sensitive for the individual, as you might imagine, for the people trying to sell their homes. As long as it was going to be changed anyway, I thought council would agree, let's make it work for people living in this neighborhood, so I hope you'll support this.
All right. And it was moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Benars. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We are adjourned. Oh, excuse me, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was this piece of a...
Yes, I think all...
Correspondence on our desk, and I just wanted to make sure that the development crew was aware of this and have this copy as well.
I don't know if they have that copy, but they're aware of that timeframe. We'll give them a copy tomorrow, so they have the same copy you do. You, counselors had asked for just a schedule for the Pringle Creek LLC development at the former Boise site, so that's what you have before you is a schedule of the decisions. We'll give them a copy as well.
I just wanted to say thank you very much on that.
Thank you. Yeah, I was glad to see that, too. All right. We are adjourned, and we have an executive session in the city manager's conference room now.